Better late than never. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, January 4th, 2017. At this time, we'd like to invite you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Janet Simmons, who passed away during the past week. Janet worked in the police station for well over 20 years. And she also, when she was not in Florida, when she was back in Dayton, she used to spend time at Lincoln Village making sojourn vests. So in her memory, I will ask for that moment of silence.
At this time, I will approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular selectmen's meeting on December the 14th, 2016 be approved.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 27A-17, in the amount of $85,097.87 payroll. Warrant 27B-17, in the amount of $126,888.05. And warrant 27C-17, in the amount of $53.99, the last two being accounts payable, be approved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Correspondents?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Announcements. Tonight's announcements. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You may call (508) 669-6431 for more information. The burning season is January 15th, 2017, through May 1st, 2017. Permits may be obtained at the Dayton Fire Station at 300 Main Street for $10. Please make your checks payable to the Town of Dayton. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1st through April 1st. No parking is allowed on any street during this time. Landfill stickers are available now only at the transfer station during regular hours on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Payment by check only. You can make your checks payable to the Town of Dayton for $15. Registration is required for the vehicle being permitted. Stickers are not transferable. In the event of a snow emergency, which occurs during normal transfer station hours, the transfer station will not open for business. Senator Mark Pacico, R.A., representative, will be at the Dayton Council on Agent Tuesday, January 17th, 2017, from 12:45 PM to 1:15 PM. And then at Dayton Town Hall, from 1:30 PM to 2 PM. If you would like to set up an appointment, please call, excuse me, (508) 823-0095. The town census have been mailed. We ask that you please complete and return them as soon as possible. Nomination papers for the annual town election are now available at the clerk's office. The Green Communities Grant Committee is still accepting applications for members. The last day to submit a volunteer application is Thursday, January 12th, at 4:30 PM. The deadline for reports to be included in the 2016 Town of Dayton Annual Report is January 30th, 2017. And special election for the police headquarters and communications center will be held Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, at the Dayton Elementary School from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I do believe we have--
One other announcement?
Yeah, we have a couple here, too.
Okay. Why don't you do those?
Okay. For those who have lived in town for a little while, today, yesterday, no, January 8th is the 25th anniversary of the fire at the Dayton Middle School. That middle school, for those of you that were in town at the time, that fire destroyed and demolished the Dayton Middle School on January 8th, 1991. Also on cable, at regular scheduled times, no special timeframe that we know of, Channel 9, all week long, the fire that the cable did televise at that time will be shown all week long. So turn on the Channel 9 and see if you can catch some of that fire footage. And the last announcement is our elected officials' terms that are expiring. Again, nomination papers are available as of yesterday. We have a three-year term on a board of assessors with the expiration of Pamela J. Waller's term. We have a three-year term for Board of Selectmen being vacated by Dean Cronin. There are two school committee positions open, each for three years, being vacated by Eliza Kucha and a second one, Janice Terry. There's a five-year term available for one position on the Housing Authority, being vacated by Jeffrey Alley. Another one seat on the Park and Recreation, being vacated by Heidi J. Swiss. We have a single vacancy of five years for a planning board member, being vacated by Joseph Figarito. There is a one-seat opening for three years as a public library trustee, being vacated by Ronald J. O'Connor. There's a one-seat as a sewer commissioner. And a one-year term as town moderator, being vacated by William E. McKeon, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
This is for the people on Center Street, whose property will be affected by the extension of the sidewalk. Today, we had an hours period of time for any appraiser wishing to come in and look at the plans and submit a proposal to the town to be hired to do the appraisal of the easements that we need. We had sent mailings out to three different appraisers, and one came in today and reviewed the project with Tom Ferry and me, and took a set of plans. So for the people on Center Street, I want you to know that the gentleman's name is Claude Giroux. Mr. Giroux is the appraiser that did the work for the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge and also for the Old Somerset Avenue Bridge. You may see him out and about looking at property, and if you have any questions, just ask him. He will be in town. If he is the individual that we hire to do that appraisal, he will make personal contact with each of the property owners to discuss the permanent easements that we need. But I just wanted you to be aware that one person did come in, Mr. Giroux. And we have requested that proposals to provide the service to the town be in here by the 17th, which is Tuesday, a couple of weeks from yesterday. And that way, the board can act on awarding the contract to do that work at its meeting on the 18th of July. If you have any questions, just give me a call at Town Hall or give me a call at home. Thank you.
Do we have any old business tonight?
No old business.
But we have some new business. First on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on the IRS standard mileage rate for 2017. Every year at this time, when the IRS decides what their rates will be for standard mileage reimbursements for medical and business and moving announced, they have just supplied us with the information for 2017. The beginning on January 1st, 2017, is standard mileage rates for the use of a car, van, pickup, or panel truck will be 53.5 cents per mile for business miles driven. And that's a decrease of a half a cent per mile from 2016. If you're-- there will be a rate of 17 cents per mile driven for medical or moving purposes. That's down 2 cents from 2016. And it'll be 14 cents per mile driven in service of charitable organizations. And that, I believe, is the same. So I entertain a motion to approve the 2017 standard mileage rates.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have some road opening permits. These are all going to be requested by Columbia Gas. The first one is to act on a road opening permit for Columbia Gas at 1266 Susan Road. Anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Would anybody like to second it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Will all of these approve by Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is just merely, so we don't reiterate on each one, this is only this board had given permission in granting a road cut at the following locations that we'll name. And most of them was to cut off gas service at the main. This one is at 1266 Susan Road. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion passes unanimously. The next road opening permit is for a location of 2086 Palmer Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the road opening permit for Columbia Gas at 2086 Palmer Street.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. And again, this is to cut off the gas service at the main. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The next road cut we'll act on is a road opening permit, again, by Columbia Gas at 126 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the road opening permit requested by Columbia Gas at 126 Main Street.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? This will be a gas leak repair at 126 Main Street. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. And there's one more request for a road opening permit by Columbia Gas at 1252 Pine Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the road opening permit request from Columbia Gas at 1252 Pine Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? The service here will be to install a new gas service at 1252 Pine Street. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. And the last piece of new business on tonight's agenda is to review, discuss, and act on some feedback of the five-day work week at Town Hall.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, as you know now, for over five years, the Town Hall has been in on a four-day-per-week work schedule. Prior to that taking place, the Town Office was open on a half-a-day Friday, so it was actually a four-and-a-half-day work week. One of the conditions that was in the agreement that led to the four-day work week was that if a sufficient number of town residents felt that the Town Hall should be open for a half-a-day on Friday, they should make that known to the Board of Selectmen. Well, over the past few years, we have not had substantial input from the public regarding this. However, we met with the treasurer, collector, and chairman of the Board of Assessors today, and one of the topics we discussed was the four-day work week. The reason being that during the month of November, when Thanksgiving occurs, and obviously December, when Christmas and New Year's occurs, we have received, I'll say, comments from individuals about the amount of time that Town Hall was actually closed during November because of the Thanksgiving holiday and the terms in the collective bargaining agreement that resulted from the four-day work week. And also Christmas and New Year's, because the holidays fell on Sundays, which meant the holiday was celebrated on Monday, but there was also closing ahead of that weekend. So my personal message to the residents of Dayton is, if you would like to see a change in the work schedule, going back to a four-and-a-half-day work week, please somehow get in touch with the Board of Selectmen. You can do it by sending email to boardofselectmen@townofdighton.com. That's a general mailbox that will come in that Karen can access. And if you would like to make a comment, please do. If you would like to make an anonymous comment, you can send it to the Board of Selectmen at 979 Somerset Avenue. Doesn't have to be signed, but you can drop it in the mail. And again, it's 979 Somerset Avenue. It's Dayton 02715. You also have an option, if you would like to do it anonymously, to drop a note in the black box out in the parking lot where we accept payments by check or things of that nature. If you want to do it in the drop box, put it in an envelope, address to Board of Selectmen, and just indicate what your feelings are. We're probably going to announce this a few more times. If anyone has any comments they would like to make, whether you want to sign them or do it anonymously, this is an opportunity to do it. The reason that it's being brought up tonight is because, as I said, a number of comments were made, not in writing or anything else, but concerns about the amount of time that Town Hall was closed. And so we're putting this out there so you have an opportunity to let us know how you feel. And I would say we'll collect these until the end of January. Anytime in January, use one of those options. You're welcome to certainly come to a meeting and state your position, but we want you to know that anonymous comments will be accepted, and you've got a few options to do that. So we'll let you know, beginning of February, what kind of a response we got. And we will do what we have to do if there is a substantial response to this question. And I will just say, there were enough comments this time. It's not like something you can ignore. And in the past, there's been one here and one there, but you now have an opportunity, and we will take into consideration everything we receive. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
May I add something, Mr. Chairman, about that?
Sure.
Obviously, I can't and won't speak for sentiments regarding the four- or five-day work week from before I was on the board, but I will say two things. One thing I wanted to mention is that we had the candidates forum when I was running for Selectmen the second time. That was actually one of the questions, was would I support going back to a five-day work week? And I would absolutely support it if there was enough people out there. The second thing I will say is, in my personal feeling, I think there are enough people out there that want us to go back to a five-day work week. I can tell you, I don't know who caught Nancy's ear, but I've actually have this brought up regularly, like literally once a week almost. So I definitely think there are enough people. So I hope to hear from you all between this period now and February, and I'm looking forward to it.
If I could just add to that one, excuse me. When I ran for Selectmen this last time, that was the topic. And previous candidates, when I was a candidate, people asked me that. And my response always was, "It's not cast in stone." That memorandum of agreement that was written, written by me when I was on the board before, voted and approved by the Board of Selectmen, that went into effect, has a clause that clearly states, "There are two conditions under which the four-and-a-half-day work week will be reinstated." The first one is, any employee who has to, who is under that agreement, who says they cannot work the extended hours in one day, because what happened was, when we closed Fridays, the same number of hours had to be worked, which meant that the work day got lengthened. So the condition was, number one, if an employee covered under that agreement said, "I can no longer get up early in the morning or work late in the day, it's just too tiring," or for whatever reason, if that happened, only one employee had to speak up and it would go away. No employees have done that. The other clause is, if a substantial number of townspeople said they want Town Hall open, they just have to let us know, and so this is your opportunity. It is not cast in stone. It's probably the only labor memorandum of agreement, I think it is, in this community, where the townspeople actually have a say on whether or not this will be changed. So we're not recommending that either way, but we're saying to you, because of feedback we've had, or comments that have been made, we're opening this up to the public and saying, "This is your chance. Please let us know how you feel." Thank you.
I would just go back to one of our announcements as far as the 25th anniversary of the Dayton Middle School burning. Mr. Only just came up and gave us a little further information, so it was an update. For broadcast on Channel 9, the Selectmen's meeting will be broadcast at 12 noon. And immediately following the Selectmen's meeting, 12 noon each day, there's about a 25 or 30-minute tape of the Dayton Middle School fire back in 1991. The second viewing, the Selectmen's meeting, on a daily basis, will be broadcast at 7:00 at night with the tape of the Dayton Middle School fire immediately following. We can't give you an exact time of the showing of the Dayton Middle School fire, because we don't know how long the Selectmen meetings were. So it'll air directly after the Selectmen's meeting. So thank you, Mr. Only, for bringing that to our attention. Next on the agenda, we have some acknowledgements. First, I have an anonymous donation, the amount of $391.40 to the Council on Agent.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation in the amount of $391.40 to the Council on Agent.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. That's a nice donation. Second acknowledgement we'd like to make is for an anonymous donation in the amount of $120 to Primetime.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge an anonymous donation in the amount of $120 to Primetime.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
We under reports.
We need to go back.
Mrs. Gula has a report for us that I skipped over. Sorry about that.
Well, actually, Mr. Cronin could give it, but the reason why we started at 8:00, well, actually, around 8:05 tonight, the reason that the meeting was scheduled later was, the board received an invitation to attend the inauguration of Sheriff Thomas Hodgins. He has been elected for the fourth time. When he completes this term, I believe his service will be around 24 years in total. It was very well attended. I personally felt, as I said, Mr. Cronin and I attended it, I personally felt that because of the amount of assistance the Town of Dayton has received through the sheriff's office, whether it was painting the interior of this building, through that works program that they have, cleaning up the various cemeteries and trimming brush, they have done some roadside cleanups in the past, but they have been very accommodating to the Town of Dayton when we've requested assistance. And I can go back a little bit further. When I was on the board the last time, one of the serious threats that everyone faced was the potential for the swine flu pandemic. And it was Sheriff Hodgkins that had a task force set up in case that pandemic hit Bristol County. And Alice Souza and I attended an all-day workshop at Tonnes State Hospital that was put on by the sheriff, and we met colleagues from Rehoboth, and Krista Payton, the superintendent from the Aggie School, was there. But he brought together people from all over Bristol County, and we spent that day planning for and understanding what the roles would be in each community. for and understanding what the roles would be in each community if, in fact, we had that pandemic. Thank goodness we didn't, but I always remembered that the other meetings we had were more local, but this was something that he took on. And he still has a committee, I'll call it, within his department that is more, nowadays is more considered with Homeland Security, let's put it that way. But anyhow, I do remember the assistance that we got when I was on the board the last time, and how important it was, and how it helped us to plan locally, once we knew what would happen at the county level. And so, he was sworn in, the keynote speaker was Governor Baker, and he swore in the sheriff for his term. And then in turn, the sheriff swore in a number of deputy sheriffs. But it was at Bristol Community College, and it lasted about an hour. But I just mentioned this, you'll be seeing in the paper about the installation, but Dayton was represented, and it was very enjoyable. I've never been to an inauguration for a sheriff before.
Very good, very good. Brett, did you have any reports?
Nope.
Nope.
Having a good year. Good year so far.
Next, public input. Do you have any public input?
I have a couple things. I'd like to know what's going on with the Van Gisem Hall. I know every week you guys have a new topic, but we haven't talked about the Van Gisem Hall in a while, and, you know, what's the status with that?
Mrs. Hathaway has been in touch with the Land Use Committee, because she acquired some more property through tax title. So, the Land Use Committee has been meeting to determine what to do with the, in other words, update the list and go through the list and see if there's any property on there that should be recommended for sale, keeping, classify it somehow. The Van Gisem property is on that. Mrs. Hathaway has also been in touch with the auctioneer, and he's waiting for the list of properties. So, it's, although we haven't talked about it, it is in the process. And the last report that I heard was that the Land Use Committee had met, and they were updating the list so that she could give something to the auctioneer, because obviously, he wants a complete list, because he's not going to come down and do this, and then we call him back. He wants to be able to put out a whole list and advertise it, and that's where it is.
So, that building's going to be sold or demolished?
It's on the list for auction right now. That is the first option.
And how about all the equipment on the inside, the kitchen equipment and that kind of stuff? Is that going to be put out to bid? I know there's a lot of good kitchen equipment in there that could be sold.
Well, when we talked about it at the Options at Town meeting, it's sold with its, it'll be auctioned at it with its content. Now, if we don't auction it off.
Right.
Before we.
Because it demolishes.
Before it gets demolished, I would think there could be certainly consideration to sell equipment.
Okay. My other thing is, with the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen being broken up, we haven't heard anything from you, whether or not, when that's taking place, how it's going to take place, who's going to be on the new Board of Health, and how do you plan on paying the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen? Would you be considering taking a pay cut and giving them happy pay, or do you plan on paying the same amount the Board of Selectmen's being paid now? Have these, have these things been discussed?
We're waiting for the report from the committee that is working on this.
They haven't.
Did you drag in fees, is what you're saying?
No.
No, they haven't met. They have, they have met. I don't know how many meetings they've had. I don't know how many meetings they've had. I know they had a slow start, but I know that they, they met before Christmas. But we don't have a report. And included in their duties are the, what they're working on are the answers to the questions.
Yeah, from what I hear, you know, and I hear, what I hear, but you know, they've already basically got a pick, you know? Floyd, everyone I talk to, Tom Pius is going to be on it, Mr. O'Connell, the president guy who does the inspections now, Mr. Bernado. Now, whether or not that's true or not, but that's what everybody's talking about.
Once they, once this committee gives its report.
Yeah.
I would assume part of it would be, anyone interested in being considered for appointment, you must fill out an application. They're supposed to set the qualifications, because we're hoping somebody is going to have a health background. And I think it'll be filled the way other positions are filled. The committee is Mr. Pius, Mr. O'Connor.
And Mr. Tanis.
Mr. Tanis, and then Mr. Cavalo, who is the Somerset Swansea Inspector. Mr. Bernado is the Health Inspector. He's not part of that committee, but certainly he could apply.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, I haven't heard anything from the Board of Selectmen about this, but, you know, six months ago, it was hot topic.
Well, and then we gave that committee the authority to study it and to organize.
Well, let's get on to it.
Well, but you know full well, if we were to urge them, then we would be, we would be reprimanded for micromanaging, so.
Yeah.
You know how it is.
So, in the meantime, you're looking at the Board of Health still.
You're stuck with us, Mr. Woods.
The Board of Health is functioning.
Temporarily.
The Board of Health is functioning, and it's doing what it has to do with.
Okay, and another thing I have is, obviously, you haven't talked about it tonight, I came in a little late, but these postcards that have been sent out to everybody in town about the police station.
We haven't talked about the project.
Well, I mean, everybody that I know, one of my postcards, box, and one of my mailbox at home, they sent me two. Nobody's talking about it. I'd like to know how the three of you, our Board of Selectmen, feel about this.
The postcard?
Do you support the police station, or don't you? I want to know who's behind this.
Okay, the postcard, I believe, is a group of citizens or residents. I don't know who sent it. I can tell you, I've stated repeatedly that I support the police station being built. When the, let me back up a little. Just some history for folks out there. The first time that they solicited bids, the bids came in at over, I'm sitting here, over $600 a square foot. Everyone in the room agreed, "That's ridiculous." And they felt that the reason it was so high was because compared to what other communities around us are building, meaning square footage, they, and it's a lot of work right now, people who would have bid on it considered it a small job. They're not desperate for work, so they bid it high. And if they got it, oh, this, we're going to make out well. When that over $600 a square foot number came in, the committee, the Police Communications Building Committee, decided, along with the architects that were here and the project manager, "We've, we've got to look at this design, we've got to get the cost per square foot down, we need to come up with a new plan." They discussed both a one-story building, more square feet, and a two-story building, which would have been additional square feet. As a result of all of that, they came up with the design, I think it was out in the foyer today, the floor plan and the outside, what the building looks like, which is what the townspeople acted on last October, and now we'll have a chance to vote on next, the 10th, next Tuesday. I personally support what happened as far as, I supported it when we were going to build a building. When I heard $600 a square foot, it was like, "Oh, brother," you know? They came up with a new plan. I've sat through the meetings, I've heard what they've said, and I, I will vote for it. I feel we've got to do something. I feel that based on what happened the first time, when the bid came in so high, the committee went back to work, came up with new design. The estimated cost per square foot is projected to be lower. We won't know until it goes out to bid. But all of these steps have to be taken. We can't go out to bid until we know whether or not townspeople support, will support it next Tuesday. And if they support it, they can put it out to bid. If we get reasonable bids and the contracts are awarded, I think we're looking at 2018? Late 2018?
Late, yeah.
If everything falls in place, obviously. So, yes, I support it.
How about you, Al?
We, we saw you at the special time meeting, yes, I support it absolutely.
Yeah, everybody knows about this postcard, and I can't believe your people sat here tonight, you didn't even bring it up.
No, we, we answered. What do you, I think.
Been talking about it.
Right. But everyone needs to understand, we as a board cannot go out and beat the bushes and tell people, "Vote for it, vote for it, vote for it." As individuals, and I'm speaking as an individual, and I intend to put something on my Facebook, I will express my opinion, and I'm going to refer to the card, because I've had a chance to look at it and study it and think about what comments were made. But as a board, we can't go out and beat the bushes, just like if I were a school committee member and wanted something done, even as an employee of the school department, when I worked there and we had a number of issues for regionalization, we were told point-blank, "You cannot go out and campaign for this. If you're asked as an individual, you can give an opinion. You cannot go out and campaign and try to get townspeople to vote the way you want them to vote." That's why the board has not, as a board, been out there saying, "Vote, vote, vote," okay?
Okay. I just felt it was important that your people understood that your people were supportive. You know? I think that's important.
Yes, I agree.
You've got to send this message.
I agree. And the reason I haven't, tonight's the first night, other than being at town meeting when I got up and spoke and encouraged people to vote that night.
You know, it's gone on, it's way too long.
I agree. I agree. And as I said, I am going to write something for posting on my face, as an individual, on my Facebook page.
I got my tax bill in the other day and it went down $23 a quarter, and I know when this police station goes through, it's probably going to go up double that, but it is what it is, you know? We're ready for this, we need it.
I will tell you this, the, we did have projected numbers from the tax rate, and that information was, was given out.
About $6 or $4.
But I will also tell you this, right now, we are substantially, and I do mean substantially, under the levy limit. Our taxes went down, most people's taxes went down a few pennies.
I think yours was down $25.
Some people actually had an increase. I, was it, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, I think, her taxes actually went up. But think about that. For the most part, there was a slight decrease in taxes, both commercial and residential. We are substantially under the levy limit, okay? We had money in free cash that allowed us to put substantial sums into the stabilization account, which is, you know, the town saving account. We put money into the town's capitalization stabilization account. Both of those counts, the only way you spend that money is with a town meeting vote, has to be voted, and it's, I believe it's a two-thirds majority anyhow. And the other thing we did, we have again put money into the unfunded liability for medical insurance, or OPEB. There aren't many communities around that can say that. So, when you look at that, my personal opinion is, having, having sat on the Finance Committee as long as I have, having been a Selectman when we had some extremely tight times, we didn't lay anybody off, we didn't hire anybody, we didn't fill any vacancies, we were at the levy limit and managed to provide all services, we didn't cut any services, and we were at the levy limits, which meant each year, taxes went up a little, they went up a little. But we made it through. And when I look at where we are right now today, sitting here as a Selectman, RFI, we're still on the Finance Committee, which I was on not too long ago, when things were financially improving. Tax rates hadn't gone down, they weren't skyrocketing either. My personal opinion is, right now, the town is in good shape, which doesn't mean a lot if you are really struggling right now, you're personally yourself. I can only look at the overall picture and say, right now, the town is in probably the best shape it's been in years. If, if we were in the state we were in a few years ago, when the economy tanked, we would not be putting money into stabilization, we would not be even setting up a capital stabilization account. The OPEB liability, we'd still be laughing at it like we were when that legislation got passed and said, "Forget that, we're not putting money in there until we have some money," and until the legislation changed, which both of those things have happened. We're not dumping tons in there, because the legislation still isn't the way we would like to see it. When I say "we," I'm talking about cities and towns that have discussed this at MMA meetings, but in any case. So, yes, I'm going to support it. Personal opinion.
Okay. I just, one more thing. Good, back to the five-day work week. Political suicide for you three, to bring that up, but.
I have considered that. I have made it clear to the people, I was here when it was written, I drafted that memorandum.
I was here, Nancy, man.
It was run by legal counsel. What is in that memorandum was agreed to by everybody. Now, if somebody's saying, "Well, I'm not voting for her, because she brought that up." Quite frankly, folks, I was recruited to come back this time, but you, everyone understood when the memo was written what the conditions were. The people in this town do have a say, so.
And you know what? When I worked here, what I saw with that is, and there's more than just the November, December, you've got the Fourth of July, Columbus Day, I think there's 13 Monday holidays, but my secretary was famous for taking the day before that off too, or the day after, and it was kind of like abusing it somewhat, even though legally she could do that, because she was in the union. But what would happen is, her workload would get way behind, and she would be inundated with work because of the holiday, and then taking the day before or the day after the holiday, it's almost like getting 13 mini-vacations a week. Most people don't understand that. But you don't quit when you have work to do that needs to be done, and you don't have the time to do it, you get yourself in trouble. You know, and I saw it happen in my department, I don't know what goes on in other departments, but in my department, I saw that. And it was unfortunate, but given that Friday off just opened up a whole can of worms, to some weeks where they only got to work two days, it's not conducive.
Work two and have five off.
Yeah, pretty good deal.
And the other thing is, and I'm not going to zero in on anybody or any department, this is the only building this happens in. And unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon how it affects you, there are other employees in this community covered under the same collective bargaining agreement who don't benefit from that. It's only this building. That has been brought to light as a reminder again. Now, the people in this building are working the same total number of hours that are required. However, other people covered under the same contract have to work, let's say it's a 35-hour work week, they got a, they don't get an option of the four days. And that's why there were conditions put in that agreement, that memorandum, and because, again, because of the feedback, all the comments, all the questions. We, we met with the, three of the department heads in this building today, and we talked about it. And as a result of that, we wouldn't have brought this up tonight if we hadn't discussed it already in this building, because that wouldn't be right. But the fact that it was discussed at an open meeting. But the fact that it was discussed at an open meeting, I personally felt, because of what I heard, we need to let the public know what the situation is regarding the four and a half, the four-day or the four and a half-day work week, how it came about, and what the terms specifically are. And as I said, it's probably only labor agreement in this community that has a clause in it where the public can actually say what they would like done. So I'm not telling people to do it, I'm not telling people to not do it. I'm just saying, those of you who spoke to me, you're going to remain anonymous. Anyone who wants to have a voice and be anonymous, you've got some options to do it between now and the end of the month, in the mail, in the email, in the box out there, you don't have to sign it. But if there are, if there are people out there who have an opinion, that want to express it, that haven't spoken to me or my colleagues or haven't, haven't said anything, but have a feeling, you have an opportunity now to speak up. You're not going to be ignored, you're not going to be identified if you, quite frankly, even if you sign it, put your return address, as far as I'm concerned, you're not going to be singled out. People I hear from are not going to be mentioned by name, they're not going to be singled out, they're not going to be identified in any way, because it's not casks and stone. It's, it's a unique situation, quite frankly, but it's, it's in there.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Well, I'm curious, actually.
Okay, I can say.
No, he's, he's got something.
I probably shouldn't open the outdoors box, but I'm curious now, how do you feel about it?
Oh, I feel, I, I thought it was a mistake from the beginning. That's just how I felt.
So you want to go back to four and a half?
Absolutely, and I think most people do.
Not because you're not working for the town.
Well, you know, I only work
It didn't really, it didn't really affect him as a, as a person. No.
It didn't affect me, but it affected my workload in the secretary that I had because she was full-time. And, you know, those weeks where she would only work two days a week, and nothing against her, she's a great lady and a great secretary, but she was just playing the game, you know? She was entitled to take those days off, and so she did. But really, who, who suffered? My clients, the veterans, you know, because she was behind in the workload, you know, she would get inundated. You know how it is when you're behind, you're rushing, you're making mistakes. And that's how mistakes are made. You know, we're, and I'm not perfect, and she's not perfect, nobody's perfect, but when you're under the gun, you won't have to make a mistake.
Would you like to express your opinion on the police station now?
I think it's well overdue, whatever the price is, let's just get it done. That's what I say. That's what I say, you know? And I'm sure whatever the price is saying today, it's not going to be the final price, they're going to have to come back and ask for more money.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, you know, I, I mean, it could come in under budget, but, you know, I don't believe in theories, so.
I think we all agree that the longer it takes, because we've seen the history, the longer it drags out, when it eventually gets built, the longer it takes, the more the costs are going to go up.
I mean, I've been in there, you know, my wife has, when she has to renew her gun license, she had to sit in that dingy little hallway in front, you know, and it's just disgusting.
I was just out there a couple weeks ago.
Disgusting, okay? I don't want my wife or my daughter
For your selectmen.
Or, or, you know, you know.
The nicest thing in that room is that display case.
Yeah.
You know the one I made?
Yeah, the old one.
Display case.
Yeah. You got a picture of Dave and the towel in there.
Hey, I want you to know that there is a medal in there that was given to me by a woman who was a member of the Canadian Northwest Mounted Police, who was stationed in Whitehorse, and she gave that to me. And I met her on a cruise ship, and she was onboard because the, the ship had come into Boston, and it was the maiden voyage, and she had been invited to be one of the guests. And my husband and I happened to be invited to go to see the ship, tour the ship and whatever. But anyhow, she was there, and she gave that to me. And it's, it's a medal or an insignia that she, she had these to give out. And she said to me, what are you going to do with it? I said, I don't collect these, but I'm going to offer it to the local police department because they have other memorabilia. And so that's, that's how that got there. But it's real. And I said, I don't know how many communities have RCMP insignia, but, but I did give it to the chief, and it is in the case. That's how it got there.
Okay, let's get it done. That's what I say.
I agree.
Me too.
Percy? And we didn't make you get up there tonight because we're not at 68, by the way.
You better mess it up on the numbers. I think you better go back and do your homework because your numbers are a little messed up.
Well, we're waiting to see if you're going to correct this.
She has been waiting since I've always
We are at 68. We are
But then you had all the reporters up there, you forgot to count them also. So I believe you
The way they were, the way they were bouncing back and forth.
That is true.
And then we had some talk from the audience, you know, but whatever.
But you know what, how I feel, I feel that a person is much more than a number, so I don't like being numbered.
This humanity, instance.
You're the only one that doesn't like having a number.
You know, you have to deserve it, I have a number.
But you said 68, I'm just going to, I'm holding you to that.
One more than that, Nancy. Say it out loud. 68 and one is?
You said when it gets to 68, you're, you want to be there. So we got you targeted for 68. 68, we're not talking age, we're talking
Well, it's my wife's birthday now.
68?
No, 69.
Oh. If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All the ladies and gentlemen say aye.
Aye.
I propose. The ayes have it. Goodnight, Gabriel. Goodnight, ladies and gentlemen, and see you next week.